Okay, I'll call a meeting to order Monday, February 27th, 2012, Bennington Firehouse, Bennington Select Board. Justin, will you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands under God indivisible with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, next item on the agenda are the minutes for February 13th.
I'll move they be accepted as printed.
Have a motion, second and a second. Any discussion on Monday, February 13th, 2012 is minutes. Not all in favor, and that's six, four, one missing, one absent. Next item on the agenda warrants, we'll start with John Zane. John, any questions on the warrants?
Not at this time.
Jason?
None.
Sharon?
Just one, Stu, on page six, would you just go over those bank payments, please? Got three quarters of the way down. It says Hunt Street and Hunt Street. I'm just not sure what those are.
Those are FEMA receipts-
Okay.
And insurance, partial payments for the losses. The chlorinator building is the water system, the intake and the line that leads to the chlorination building. That is partially FEMA and partially insurance. And the same with Morgan Spring. We lost a pump due to a power outage or a surge during FEMA, that's a FEMA payment, and the others are FEMA payments as well. And what we're doing is we're paying back the line of credit.
Okay, so FEMA is starting to reimburse us for some of the funds?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Okay.
So it's a principal payment?
Essentially, yes.
It's principal reduction?
Pay on the line of credit.
Okay. It's fine, yeah.
Justin?
I have none. No.
Sure, I want to go to page one, and I want to go down to the fiscal year 12 education tax.
Yes.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. Is that our first payment to the school district for fiscal year 12?
Actually, it's probably our last payment, or maybe our last payment. Twenty days after the taxes are due, which is generally in and around December 10th or sooner, we pay over what we have collected. And then on or before, I think it's March 15th and June 15th, we pay over what additional monies have come in.
Okay.
So throughout the year, we pay over the monies that we collect for the school district. And as of June 15th, we are supposed to have paid over all of the monies we have collected.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask you to review for the audience out there, because I was asked a question this week of how are the school taxes paid? People know we collect them. If you just go through the procedure that-
Yes. Basically, what happens is the state of Vermont, Property Valuation Review, or Property Tax Division, sends us, and we either will have it soon or we have it now, an approximation of the taxes entirely owed to the district. We then align our books to pay off all of the taxes. This would be for FY 12, or those collected in November of 2011. And because it's a school tax, once the budgets are dealt with, as in March, July 1 begins the fiscal year for 2013, and the school district and the state of Vermont will tell us what their budgets are and what the state's equalized education grant list and tax will be. Based on that, we then bill in September for collections in November, and the process simply repeats itself.
But the school is held harmless for any delinquent taxes owed to the town, is that correct?
Yes.
And I guess what the question went on to me, and I hope I answered it right, is the fact that if there has to be any adjustments because of delinquent taxes, it falls on us to make the adjustments and not the school district?
That's correct. We absorb the delinquency for the school district.
Okay. I think I answered it correctly, and that's for everybody's knowledge out there. All right, the next item on the agenda, citizens? Michael?
Michael Keen from North Bennington.
I don't bend over, Mike.
Thank you. I won't bend over. This is a reminder that tomorrow evening in this very room from seven o'clock, there will be a select board candidate forum. The select or the select board candidates will be present. We encourage the public to come, sit, and there will be the possibility of the public also asking questions.
Glad you bring that up, Mike, because on my drive in, there was a call in at WBTN from a listener, wanted to know if this thing, I guess they had heard it had been canceled or they hadn't seen any advertisement on it, and wanted to know whether it was still going on. And I called them back and said, "The best of my knowledge, it was still on at seven o'clock tomorrow evening."
That's correct.
Still it is?
Seven o'clock tomorrow evening, right here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? Josh?
John Shanahan, and I just want to give you a quick update on the work that the Economic Development Committee has been doing locally, recently. And I'm going to give you some copies here of just some homepages of websites. It's a small job that we've been working on recently, just to give you an idea of where we've started to make some changes. And that top page is a copy of the current Bennington Chamber of Commerce website. If you look at that bar across the top, the one that says, has a little logo, it says Bennington.
Isn't this the Town of Bennington homepage?
It is also. The two, the Town and the Chamber share a website. It's the Chamber's website, they own it, and you access the Town Government and the Tim Corcoran's office through that. They are going to work on splitting those up into two websites to make it easier to manage, either the Chamber run their own or the Town run their own. But the point I was getting at is that bar across the top is the one that we've, as the committee adopted as a logo and a bar to use for all of our websites across the top, so that no matter who comes or who looks up Bennington, Vermont, they're always going to see that bar, so that it looks that we have a unified message and a brand that we can use. If you go beyond the first page, you'll see a couple of pages that are part of the BBC website, where we've created a Joint Economic Development Committee page. On that page, it tells you a little bit about what we've done so far, who we are, who's involved in it, what the committees are and the work groups, and some of the goals of each of those work groups. Those committees don't have the names of everybody who's on the committee, it just shows the chair of them. And the chair of each committee currently is building the committees and adding additional organizations that don't necessarily have to come to the monthly board meetings, but will be part of the focus groups.
I asked John to bring this tonight. We had a meeting this morning, the task force did, and we had an expert, actually an owner of a, I guess he's a webmaster kind of thing out of Williamstown or North Adams, and he recommended we do this. So if you click on any of the major players in town, whether it's BCIC, BRC, the Chamber, Bennington, that top line will hit you. And if you look at, well, if you look at some of the work that's been done, again, I'll take you to Better Bennington Corporation, you know, they got, talk about the property inventory, what's available down here, spaces. I went on it today, it actually lists landlords, and actually lists prices, as I recall, some of them, square footage available.
Yeah, because that is our website, and it might be changed, because we just decided today to link everybody to that page, because it's the only information we have at the current moment. But because it's on our website, there's two sections that I address. One is local resources, and then the downtown resources. So I separated out the Economic Development Committee partners and information with the downtown work that we've already done, and all of that's available on our website. That inventory is just of downtown available properties. We have a, for downtown, we have a photo of every single property, landlord, square footage, and we manipulate it as a property either goes offline or comes online being available. So that's what that link would take you to, but that doesn't go beyond our current borders of downtown. One of the projects we're talking about is doing that for manufacturing as well, but at the joint website, once we get that up and running.
Go ahead.
Or, I'm sorry, I'd like the site for BCIC, because you'd be able to link from all of our sites into each other's sites.
I think we've all agreed it's important that everybody that speaks of Bennington speaks with one voice, so that's why we've got it. And I'm tickled the way the education communities come on, all the agencies that we normally deal with in Economic Development Con, and momentum's still going, and I think you see it's going, and we're not waiting, the task force is not waiting to award this grant to someone to come in and give us a plan. We're working on things, and hopefully it'll work and help whoever gets the grant to do the economic, what do we call it, a task force plan or-
Yeah, and we had a work retreat this past Saturday where we all got together-
Right.
-working on some of the goals. So a couple of weeks we'll have that, and we'll come back and make another presentation so that you guys are getting the small updates as we're moving along.
I think Dan has worked, Dan Monks is working on something, he's going to talk to us, I think the first meeting we have in April, as far as where we are with that RFP and what we're doing on that thing, so. If you have time, anybody, even people at home, I encourage you to link on to bennington.com and see what it says, and we're open, it tells us who's on this task force. We're open to hear from you, either email or phone calls if you've got any recommendations. We don't have all the good ideas, so anybody out there has any information, let us know. Thanks.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it would be, at the moment, it would have to be betterbennington.com until the link is made.
Okay.
And you can link through bennington.com by clicking on downtown. So there is already a link, but it'll be a little more clarified in a couple of weeks.
Great. Joe? Thanks, John. Joe?
Yeah, Joe? I have a question. John, I noticed at the bottom of this, there's the Shires of Vermont logo-
Yeah.
And maybe Lindy could address it. I know you're not directly involved with them, are you, in any way?
We are.
The partnership? Just recently, I saw on television in the Capitol District, tremendous amount of advertising in the Manchester area, restaurants, stores, businesses, various other things. Very, very well done, by the way. I thought we had formed a partnership with them, that we were going to work together with them. There was no mention of Bennington anywhere in that advertisement.
There is a partnership with the Shires of Vermont, and Joanne is the one who's most heavily, from the Chamber of Commerce, involved in that. They did receive some funding from the state, and I think only, the only one that is continuing-
Lindy, could you address something about the Shires? Is the partnership still going? Could you come through, Mike?
Yes.
Oh, sure. Come on up. But I'm saying, what I think though-
Oh, okay.
I know. I'm not sure which advertising you're talking about, but the Bennington Chamber still does its own advertising, so does the Manchester Chamber. More importantly, and probably much more well-funded, is the Manchester Designer Outlets-
Mm-hmm. That was included in that ad, I think.
Which may be the thing.
Yeah.
And they partner sometimes, too. So even though we do marketing efforts for the Shires as a whole, we still do our individual stuff, and you may have seen that.
So although it's a partnership, everybody's still operating individually as well?
Well, still, additional advertising, yeah.
Because I remember there was a discussion about branding-
Right.
And one of the questions regarding that, or the ideas in that, was to use our name, Bennington, because it was the most recognizable-
That's our branding. Manchester will never use the name Bennington.
Manchester has nothing to do with that.
Well, of course not. They don't want the name Bennington.
Okay.
That's why they, actually Jonah did all the work, Jonas Spivak, for the Shires-
Right.
To keep, can't use Bennington County because Manchester wouldn't want to buy into that. As the Shires, it gets rid of the word Bennington, so as a group, we're the Shires. We still do our Bennington branding, they still do their Manchester, but we also do the Shires as Bennington, Manchester.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
And just as the advice we got this morning, correct me if I'm wrong, from this expert, is Bennington is the thing we should always have in there, it's our branding thing-
For us, absolutely.
For us. Everything we do should have Bennington in it.
Well, and also the word Vermont, which is regionally why we kept Vermont in there. Vermont is the strongest brand, but Bennington itself is a very strong brand.
I'd be surprised. Let me tell you a little quick story. I've traveled across the country, I was in California area, and I mentioned that I was from Vermont, and the first question I got back was, "What state is that in?"
Yeah.
When I mentioned Bennington, wherever I went, and Joe also made a trip recently, the name Bennington is so well-known throughout this country, and in Canada and various other places. People are, they may not really know exactly where we are or what we're doing, but they are familiar with the name and they're comfortable with the name, and therefore it is a very powerful tool.
Yeah, that's, if you, that's why we selected the fact that the Chamber used that-
Right, it's a perfect thing. Vermont is, of course, a key issue, Bennington, Vermont, it should be all one thing, but in a lot of ways, we own a very valuable, powerful tool.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Jason, Mike, John. Jason, do you have something?
Yeah, this can go to any of the folks that are here tonight. I don't know, John, if this is up your alley, although I think it probably might be, it might be Mike Keen, it might be somebody else. You know, at our last meeting, we had a very lively conversation with a local property owner about possibly rezoning property. I think it's a property that has a lot to do with economic development in this town. And my question to your group was, is do you agree with that, and are you going to be prepared to participate in the public meetings on that particular subject, since it is such a key point of economic development?
We have not, as a group, even discussed that at all yet. We're not at that point of taking a stand on it. I know BCIC, which is part of our group, and the manufacturing arm of the group, if they were here could probably speak on that more clearly and how they stand, but we haven't discussed that as an issue as a group to either support it or not. If, Mike, you wanted to make a statement on how you personally feel-
Well, I'm not asking for anybody to give a personal opinion. We had a public meeting two weeks ago where that could have been done if there was a personal opinion, but, you know, given the fact that this is an Economic Development Committee, and it is something that's been debated for at least the last five years that I've been around on this board, I was curious if that was something that your board was going to be involved with formulating positions on, pros and cons, what that position was going to be, and what research you've done to determine what's best for economic development in Bennington, and how you came to those conclusions, given the fact that you've been at work for close to a year as a committee, and that is a very visible and important piece of property.
Yeah, and I think, as far as the committee, you were just saying something to me, Lindy? As far as the committee that would be focused with that would be our Recruitment and Retention Committee, which is Mike, and I don't know, as we're forming, if that's already been addressed as an issue.
Well, I think Jason's point's well-taken, though. I think, you know, we got two here representing BBC, and we got Lindy here for the Chamber. I think Jason brings up a good point. I know I would like to, we're going to have two public hearings, I would like to hear an official position from both the BCIC Board and the Chamber Board on how they feel on that decision. Again, this is open to the community.
You see, I can absolutely get that on my next agenda to come up with an official-
And I'm sure, Peter, I'm sure BCIC is probably going to do it anyway, I would guess.
Yeah.
But I think that's something that all the organizations that are involved in any way with economic development ought to have a position on it to assist us in making the right decision when we come time to do that.
Joe, what concerns me, you know, thanks for saying that, you know, the- More importantly than the unified position of any one particular entity or any one individual's opinion, I'd like, you know, given the fact that there is a downtown group, there's a broadband group when it comes to the BBC, there is parts of this Development Committee that talks about, rather than me guess, let me read it, you know, a foreign trade zone, how railways can help us develop business, what types of new companies have been looked at, what types of companies are likely to move to a position like this. I mean, this is what you guys have been working on, and I would hope that there's, you know, this to me is, for 2012, a marquee issue for the Bennington Select Board. It's a marquee issue for the Town of Bennington going forward for the next quarter century, and I would hope, I am hopeful, I think my opinion's well-known and the reasons for it, but I would surely like to hear how local businesspeople and local economic development leaders, how they've come to their conclusions and what the basis for those conclusions are. And I certainly hope, although I know it's sometimes important to speak with one voice, as Ben said, that the phenomenon of group think doesn't seep in, and that we all come to a very sterile opinion that says a lot but means nothing. It's a very big position, I think it's an opportunity for that committee to show what they do and how they do it, and what they can make out of it, and how they can use this as a way to make Bennington better.
Yeah, you bet. We can get together in the next couple of weeks, try and get that on the agenda, and come back to you guys. When would you like us to get back to you?
Well, we're going to have two public meetings as part of the process, that was discussed at the last meeting.
The first one will be by the Planning Commission, a public hearing, and then we'll have two, and it'll be announced, I would guess, I think Dan Monks did it last time, we're probably looking at April or May to see the Select Board's public meetings that we have, somewhere in there, so.
Joe?
Yeah.
If I can jump in here, Dan talked with me late today. The Planning Commission is actually asking if they could, or a representative of the Commission could meet with you folks on the 12th of March.
Okay.
We plan to really just sign warrants that evening and have a very brief meeting, but they've got a draft of the changes to CI together, and because CI is a newly created-
Right.
...regulation, they'd like to at least introduce that to you, understand if they're on the right track, before they go back and start holding their public hearings.
I don't have a problem with that, I just, I would, okay, I think you just qualified.
Yeah.
I didn't want that to serve as their public hearing.
Oh, no, no, it wouldn't be their public hearing, it's just that they don't want to start warning public hearings if, in fact, they're on the wrong track.
If I could just ask Stu to go back to Dan, it might be new to us now, but we've had it in the town before, and as part of that presentation, I think it would be helpful for both the board and the public, assuming, I know that meeting on the 12th won't be, that might well be a short meeting at the Town Offices, simply to sign warrants and have a one-agenda, item-type meeting, but I think it would be very important for the board to have an understanding as to why we got rid of the CI designation in the first place-
Absolutely.
-as part of that presentation.
We can do that.
We used to have it, we don't have it now, so it is new in that sense, but we did get rid of it for a reason, is my understanding.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Fire Department Reimbursement Ordinance. Stuart?
Yes, we talked a little bit about this during the budget process, as a potential way to reimburse the Fire Department for callouts that aren't necessarily accidental in nature, carelessness, other issues that might arise. And many, many communities in Vermont are already doing this as a means of supporting their volunteer fire departments or their paid fire departments. This ordinance is a compilation of several municipal ordinances. I have shown it to Rob Wilmington Council. He believes that it is a legally acceptable document, and I lay it out here before you as kind of the first look. We normally take two meetings to look at these kinds of things, so that we're, we talk about it tonight, the press now has it, and hopefully it will generate some discussion or not in the community as to how we intend to use this and what its benefits would be. But we presented to you tonight, both the Fire Chief and the Police Chief have worked cooperatively to pull this together, and we vetted it with Council, and it's ready for your review.
So once we review this and we think it's okay, then it's warned, and then we need to, we have a cooling-off period?
Basically, the way municipal ordinances work, should we, we bring it back to you at your next publicly televised meeting, that would be considered to be the hearing on the ordinance, should you adopt it. There is a 60-day appeal period that begins upon adoption. We would have to publish this in the paper, and people can petition to overturn within that 60 days.
Okay. This is first look board, does anybody have anything you want to talk about it now? We'll have the next, maybe the next televised meeting, we'll look at it and move on it.
I think it looks fine to me.
Okay. Anybody, anything striking, anybody that we need to relook before we bring it back the second time? I mean, I didn't see anything. I know the alarm activations, that's been out there for a while, I know.
Yes.
Some of the other ones I remember being out there. Newsens?
Stuart, what's the-
Vern?
Sorry, Joe.
Go ahead.
The power line problems piece of this, half here, half section looks like-
Well, if, we'll use the, an instance where either a vehicle strikes a power pole or something else occurs, that a power line comes down, the Fire Department is called-
Okay.
-by Central Vermont to stand by. Fire Department wants to be able to recover their time and their materials used, simply because it's something that they would not normally be called out to do unless CVPS sees a need.
So the billing on that incident would go to CVPS, or the person who caused the-
It would go, well, CVPS, it would go to CVPS as the person that called them out. CVPS may in turn look to the homeowner, but apparently this is being done in other parts of the state.
The thing that I've got is, it seems a little on the vague side to me, to be able to stand behind this. I mean, you just touched on an incident of, you know, motor vehicle accident into a pole and knocks the wires down. You know, you could keep going with the whole thing, that, you know, you could basically hit almost all these in one call, and where do we, there doesn't seem to be any guidelines as to who gets charged for what. I mean, you say, you know, somebody throws something off a bridge that hits malicious incidents, causes a motor vehicle crash, they hit a pole, wires come down, set a house on fire, there's extrication, and it doesn't, I mean, does it go back to the original? Does it go back to the motor vehicle? Does it go to, it just seems a little vague to be-
Yeah, I think, Matt, that it would go back to the person or persons who caused the incident. That would be the first line, but I will confirm that, and if there is language that we need to add to clarify that for the board, we'll take a look at that and have it for you the next time.
And I'm just thinking ahead, because obviously it's a new policy to the town, so-
It is.
It's, I'm quite certain that it's going to be met with resistance when the first person gets charged for an incident with the Fire Department. The other question I had, are the members of the Fire Department being paid?
No, in our Fire Department, the only people who receive a stipend are the Chiefs.
So where does the $25 an hour for every firefighter, fire police after the first hour go?
That goes, it would go into the Fire Department's revenue stream, and it's based, I think, more not on so much on time of individuals, but on the equipment and everything else that's available. But I'll confirm that as well.
So would this be intended to be enacted on every call that comes into the department?
I'm going to say no. We're looking basically to those incidents where negligence or carelessness results in a call to the Fire Department, and they have to respond, and therefore would not normally be involved. I don't, it's not meant to say that if your kitchen catches fire and the Fire Department has to respond, that you're going to be billed by the department. That's not the case. This is really meant to go after people who either through carelessness or negligence cause an issue that causes them to be called out. But I will confirm that, and we'll make sure we make that clear.
What about something such as, I mean, we get, what do we get, a half dozen, six, eight, ten alarm activations at the hospital, are they going to get billed for those?
They already are.
They already are?
Yes. We are already billing for alarm activations where the Police Department responds. This takes it to the next step, where the Department itself responds, runs a vehicle out to the scene, just in case. In most instances, the Police respond first and determine whether or not the Fire Department is necessary. But the hospital is one of those situations where obviously you wouldn't want to wait too long to make that determination.
But they've never been billed from the Fire Department, though?
Not from the Fire Department, Police Department only. We do bill for false alarms.
Okay.
If I recall, we had the conversation, wasn't, didn't we talk about the fact that we're called out an awful lot, a number of times, for the motor vehicle crashes in different places? I remember talking Route 9, and we send guys up there, they sit there and-
Yeah, and most of these bills, Joe, would go to the insurance company.
How was the decision to be made if something was caused out of malicious intent or negligence? Who's ultimately responsible for that call?
I think that would be a combination of the determination by the Police as to whether or not negligence or carelessness was involved, and whether or not citations were issued, something along those lines. But I'll confirm that, that's a question I hadn't thought to ask.
Just a quick overview of this, every accident, every motor vehicle accident has a written report by the Police Agency that does the investigation. That would be available to those who would make that decision as well, so the fact-finding would be there, and it would- be there, and it would be pretty easy to determine who is responsible. Most accident investigations do come to a conclusion, and there is, as Stu pointed out, some citations or something issued at the end of it.
Yeah.
It would be easy to determine.
But it's not, it's not every one that has a citation issued, and, you know, sometimes it's, you know, slippery conditions on the road, black eyes, something like that. If the person was determined not to be driving in excess of the, of the speed limit, there probably wouldn't be any issue that follows. But there again, I really need to confirm that, so I'm not speaking out of turn here.
I guess it just seems likely, based upon this, that any two, you know, motor vehicle accident involving more than one vehicle, somebody's going to get a bill for that from the town. Is that fair to say? I mean, somebody's going to probably likely be adjudged to be the guilty party or the party at fault in that incident?
I'm going to say no, because there are times that neither party is at fault. It's due to weather conditions, it's due to something beyond the control of the parties involved. But where citations are issued, I think that's going to point to whose carrier or which individual's going to get the bill.
Jason, when we're, we're talking about a judging somebody being negligent or judging somebody being malicious or carelessness, it kind of almost implicitly brings the thought of, you know, I guess to your point, on one hand, if somebody's cited and then convicted of careless and negligent operation of a motor vehicle, well, that's a fairly bright-line test as to whether or not somebody was in fact negligent or something like that. There's a lot of citations that don't end up in a conviction, citations are often civil violations that don't meet a criminal burden. Maybe I've dismissed it in here, and I'll admit I haven't overread this thing twice and looked at it very carefully, but the concept sounds sound to me to bill for these types of things. But if we're going to judge somebody negligent or malicious or otherwise that would bring rise to a fine being levied, that would then be reimbursement to the town of Bennington or revenue for the fire department, as you said, shouldn't there be some sort of an appeal mechanism in there?
That's a, that's a good question.
Or a judge, I shouldn't say a judge by us, judged by our agents being the police chief or the fire chief or the investigating officer. You know, it just seems to me that would make a better statute, and that would be fairer.
I, well, I tend to agree with you, Jason.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that ought to be incorporated in the next draft. I think that's a good, a good suggestion. But let me ask this. On the appeal process, Jason, are you suggesting that it would be at the first level of supervision, or should that come back to the Select Board on the appeal?
I don't know. I'm just suggesting there ought to be something. I don't know what it ought to be, but it ought to be.
Well, I'm just thinking of the appeals, probably ought to, if the police chief's going to want, it's going to make the first determination, let's say, if it's this. If it's appeal, I think it should go to us probably at that point in time. I'm trying to figure out what we ought to give Stuart for guidance here to give us for the next thing.
Wow.
Well, how does somebody contest a violation of any other ordinance we have in place right now?
Right now, they appeal to the courts. I mean, if they're going to contest a citation, then they would be in traffic court or in district court.
Yeah. They'd be contesting a civil violation, like going to traffic court. Would I just do hit that nail on the head? That's exactly right.
What did we do to that dog there?
If I could, Joe, I would suggest that the Select Board would not want to be the last line of appeal here. I think that you'd find yourself hearing cases every, every two weeks.
I just think it bears some thought. I don't know what the answer is, but I think the concept needs to be considered. I don't know what the details are, but the concept is something.
I mean, right now, if someone's aggrieved by a ticket that they receive, they can, they can talk to the officer and/or the chief of police and try to get that ticket reduced. Or they can go to traffic court and make the same argument before the judge at that time. So, I mean, so that's the appeal process that's really used with most traffic citations. And I think that would make more sense, perhaps, than having this board be the last level of appeal.
I was thinking that time. Didn't we have a case not too long ago on the destruction of a dog because of?
Dog violations and appeals are set by statute, state statute, and you are the, unfortunately, the last recourse for people.
I got it.
But these technically aren't fines, though. These are bills.
But they're bills based on a judgment of negligence, some sort of malfeasance that an individual, you know, somebody's making a decision, that was negligence, that was malicious, whatever we put in the ordinance to trigger the bill, and I just look at it and think, I don't know what the answer is, but the concept of one person making that determination, foisting a bill upon somebody, when, that just draconian is an overstatement, but that just doesn't seem, that doesn't pass the smell test. There's something that's missing right now in the ordinance, and I think that's it.
That was, to my point, was there's, there's no guidelines to who gets billed. It says what you can be billed for and how much you'll be billed.
Well, there's another.
But this seems like way too much of a pick-and-choose ordinance as to who's going to get billed and who's not going to get billed. And, wow, you know, I was, I wasn't quite as much at fault as he was, but I got billed and he didn't, and, you know, I think it leaves way too much open for interpretation here in this, in this ordinance.
Well, it does in some of the things here, but I recall the alarm activators. I remember the time, we just had faulty equipment out there, and people weren't calling in their service provider to fix it, and our police chiefs were, our police were showing up every time these alarms were going off with great frequency. And I thought, I don't remember the ordinance now, but I think the first time, we said, okay, fine, that's grace. But after that, we assessed the fine, as I recall.
That's correct.
I think we called out, and it got progressively steeper the more times we got called out on it.
Joe, that mimics exactly, in Baltimore where I lived previously, I, my house was broken into, so I installed a burglar alarm. And the first two callouts that were, you know, if I went in and punched in the wrong code or didn't hit it in time and the thing went out and it got called in, free pass. Number three, you know, there was a whole schedule from the Baltimore County Police Department, to use that as an example, which was somewhat reasonable.
Yep.
But that's, I don't think that addresses the concern of, there's an accident going up Route 9, you know.
Yep.
The alarm issue is much more cut and dry.
Yeah, negligence, what's that?
The alarm issue is a lot, is much more cut and dry.
The alarm issue, you can go right clear.
Right. The question is.
Yeah, there's some of like not permitted burn, that's cut and clear. I would say the nuisance is clear. You know, it.
One man's nuisance can be another man's necessity.
We've been through that with noise ordinances here.
Can I make?
Well, Stuart, let me ask you. Stuart, do you have enough here to?
Yeah.
To play with this and bring us back to another one?
Yeah, I do.
And we may do the third look at it.
Joe?
Yeah, John.
All right. This particular format is working very well in other towns in Vermont. And the only thing I'd like to say about it is that we should reinvent the wheel. Whatever they're doing, we should be doing. Obviously, they have developed some sort of a procedure. So, I think that the best way to handle this would be to contact some towns where this has been in effect. My first recollection of this was running into small towns that are on 89 and 91. They were getting their fire trucks called out constantly for car accidents on the interstate, and it was running up tremendous expenses to them. That's where this originally comes from. And they found a way to find parties at fault or at least responsible so that they could bill the insurance company. Remember, we're not billing individuals. We're billing insurance companies, the same people who pay for the damage on your car. This comes from the same theory that the rescue squad uses to bill your health insurance for an ambulance call to take you to the hospital or whatever. So, I'm sure this is working well elsewhere, and I'm sure there are other towns we could contact, and they'll probably be able to quell our concerns about this issue.
Okay. Well, Stuart's going to take it back. He'll present it again at our next meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda is the liquor licenses, the tobacco license.
Yeah, I have one document to circulate, which has a number of liquor licenses on it. That is pretty standard. And then I have two new applications from Bennington College Corporation, one for the Commons Building and one for the Student Center, and that will require two signatures from each board member. We've marked the pages.
Okay. Manager's report, anything, Stuart?
No, I don't have anything for you tonight.
The other business. Justin?
No, you're not at this time.
John?
Well, Michael answered my question. I don't have to worry about this, but I was going to just remind folks that there will be a forum tomorrow night, and all the candidates will be there for Select Board, and it would be good for you to show your civic pride and come out and participate. Thank you.
Justin?
Or Jason, rather.
Going the wrong way.
Two cracks at it.
Going away.
Second crack at that tonight. There we go.
Sure, Justin, you want to?
Second crack at the egg. I'll think about it, come.
All right. No, not tonight.
Sharon?
Stu, have you had any feedback on the new streetlights that Stevie is putting up?
Some initial feedback was that they were, they didn't throw as much light. And if you've noticed, portions of Elm Street have now been done. There are portions of Benmont Avenue that have been done. And I think once, once you understand or appreciate the way the light is more focused on the street itself and on the sidewalk, and you're not wasting a lot of light into the air, and they're a different color light. It's a blue-white light that the LEDs throw, not the yellow light that the high-pressure or low-pressure sodium throws. So, they, it's a different form of light. It's more focused on the street. But if you, if you happen to take a ride up through the upper Elm Street, I think it's much more effective, easier on the eyes.
You think?
When you're driving. Yes.
They've been up in my neighborhood, too. I've got two up near my house now, and they're, the first time I saw it, it was like, wow, what is that bright white up there on the corner?
Well, if you look right up at it, it's very, very bright.
Well, I wasn't even looking right up at it, though. I was just looking at the street, and it was like, almost like daylight out.
Well, it's a blue-white light. It's a much different light than the sodium bulbs throw.
I'm kind of mixed about it.
And it's much more efficient. That's the key, Sharon.
I know, I know. I hate signing the warrants for all that Central Vermont stuff. That's all I have.
I do, quickly. Stu, forgive me, because I know absolutely nothing about this, and it seems to have been before my time, but the appraisals on the rack properties?
Yes.
Are those still at what they were purchased for and never been reassessed after they've been?
Ooh, I don't believe so. Anytime that we would have done a reappraisal in a particular neighborhood, they would be, they would be altered according to whatever the market value is. Generally, properties that are limited in who they can rent to, some of the low-to-moderate income limitations, will reduce the initial assessment, but the assessment changes with time and with appraisals as we move through a neighborhood. They're not, I don't believe they're static at all in that regard.
I have a question about that. How is it that a rack house gets a lower assessment due to the income of its tenant when many private landlords also rent to the same low-to-middle income or lower-middle income tenant and may receive state assistance for the payment? It doesn't make that property any more or less valuable, and when you look at the grand list statute, it goes to a fair market value. Of course, that's compromised by the coefficient that the rest of the town's at. You know, if we're at 91%, fair market value's $100,000, that should go onto the grand list at $91,000. How is it, is it a, what mechanism reduces that initial assessment for a rack house versus a private landlord?
It has to, it's the limitation, and obviously, I'm not an expert in this field, but I believe it's the limitation of who they can rent to, and the fact that these properties cannot then be turned around and marketed for fair market value at some point in the future. There's a long-term commitment on the part of the agency that gets the funds, the federal funds, to rehabilitate the home and make it available to people of low and not moderate income. They can't just at some point turn around and sell that at market value without paying a penalty. So, they are, they are restricted in a way that a private landlord is not, even though they may be renting to the same people. Now, that's a guess. I haven't, I'm not an appraiser, and.
I don't know. I just, I just, when you say that they get the lower initial roll, and I know the last time when we were discussing the North Branch Street project, we're talking about a, similar to what you just said, Stu, there's, I think in that case, it was more than 10, but it wasn't more than 20. I think it was a 15-year.
There is a limitation.
But I think the expectation, you know, and I'm surely no expert on it, was, okay, we're taking in that type of housing, but we're going to get a tax benefit from it. And if we're not going to get a tax benefit from it, you know, I guess this is just a mental note to self, keep that as part of the evaluation. The next time we're asked if we're in favor of that or not, when we add more, we add to the inventory of low-income housing and put private landlords paying full taxes at a competitive disadvantage. I mean, that's.
I mean, I'll follow up to make sure that what I've said is, in fact, the basis of the assessed values. But historically, I believe that's where it started, and frankly, I haven't spoken with John Antononi about his method and his, I won't say madness, but lately. So, I'll have to get back to you on that.
I think it's a good time with the number of new ones being built out there, North Branch and what's going on in Benmont now, probably a memo to all, just to refresh our memory what the, what the policy is.
Will do.
Okay. Matt, anything else?
That was it.
Just remind people, next Monday, the Town Hall, right here, the meeting, Town Meeting, ours will begin at 7:00 PM. Correct, Stuart?
That's correct.
There's a school here before us.
Both Mount Anthony and BSD are here before us, I believe.
Do you know the starting times?
Six and six, they're. I think it's six, yeah, Matt, I think you're right.
And I think the polls are opening at 7:00 on Tuesday. Is that correct this time?
That is correct.
And closing at 7:00?
Seven.
So, just remind everybody. I know it's not a presidential year or anything, but a lot of important issues this year. Look at the ballot. There's a lot of articles on there. I hope that everybody, every voter's taking a look at those articles and make an informed decision on how you like to vote on that. But it's important that everybody who has the opportunity shows up to vote. I know that, being in the Town Hall today, a lot of early voters have already taken the opportunity to vote, and absentees are still coming in. I believe they can, they can have absentees until when? Do we know?
I want to say it's right up until the day of the vote or the day before the vote. It's a relative, it's very close now, more so than it used to be.
Yeah, I think so. If you have any question on that, I just, Mike, do you know?
I don't want to spread wrong information, but is there not the opportunity for young people who will be turning 18?
Yes.
Before the election, to register to vote, and their deadline is?
In the primary, in the primary.
Only in the presidential primary. Right.
Yeah, that's correct. And I know a lot of 17-year-olds taking advantage of that.
Good.
I saw them over in the Town Hall.
Thank you.
The other day, taking it. If you have any question when you do it, just call Tim Corcoran at the Town Clerk's Office or Cassie, either one, and they'll confirm it for you. But the point I'm making is it's important that everybody participates in this process. Again, the Town Meeting is a New England tradition. Attendance has been dropping off over the years. I think there's a lot of reasons for that, but I just encourage anybody who could come here, it's nice to see you in person, talk and hear what you have to say about how the town's being run, or in the case of schools, the schools. So, that's about all I have. We have to go into executive session for contracts and personnel. You have a motion, please?
Joe, I have a question I want to ask, and there are two legal questions, so I want to be on for that also.
And a legal also?
Yep.
Okay, I'll move, we go into executive session.
Okay, again, for contracts, personnel, and legal.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's 6-4, one absent. Thank you, folks.